Okay, let's get started. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for April 13th, 2016. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available in at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you park in the parking garage across the street to the north, be sure to pick up a parking coupon for free parking. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cell your phone usage is not allowed or is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 1.1C Preliminary Platte 16001, 1.2 Special Permit Number 16008, 1.3 Special Permit Number 16011, and 1.4 Special Permit Number 16013. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held March 30th, 2016. Is there a motion?
Move approval as amended.
Second, Harris.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone with wishing to speak or at the request of the commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, please call the items on the consent agenda.
Okay. Please note that Item 1.3 Special Permit Number 16011 is being removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing as we've received comments from an adjacent property owner. First item on the consent agenda under annexations and related applications is Item 1.1A Annexation Number 16005 to Annex Approximately 22.36 Acres. Item 1.1B is Change of Zone Number 16013 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District for Development of Single Family Lots. And the related Item 1.1C is Preliminary Platte Number 16001 Highland View First Edition to Reflect Altergate Alterations to the Street Network to Comply With the Current Block Length Standards and Modifications to the Previously Submitted Grading and Drainage Plans. All of these locate generally located at West Silverado Court and Highway 34. And it is final action by the Planning Commission on Preliminary Platte Number 16001. Under Special Permits, Item 1.2 is Special Permit Number 16008 to Allow For the Conversion of an Existing Single Family Dwelling into a Dwelling for Up to Four Members of a Religious Order on Property Generally Located at 530 or 543 South 46th Street. This is also final action by the Planning Commission. And Item 1.4 is Special Permit Number 16013 for the Installation of a 100-Foot Flag Pole on Property Generally Located at 400 Northwest 56th Street. Also final action by the Planning Commission. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these consent agenda items?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak on the Annexation 16005.
16005?
Okay. We will also pull that from the consent agenda and it will be read or it will have separate public hearing as Item 3.2.
Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Cor.
That was Lust?
Lust.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
There are no requests for to deferral on today's agenda. We will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you'll have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, this will be Item 3.1 Special Permit Number 16011 for the Construction and Operation of a Fiber Optic Utility Building on Property Generally Located at the Southwest Corner of South 70th Street and Old Cheney Road. And this is staff recommendation is conditional approval, and this would be final action on this item by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Planning Department. This is a request for Public Utility and Cable Television Purposes Special Permit 27.63.225. And the area that we're talking about is, excuse me, southwest of the intersection of Old Cheney Road, South 70th Street. Of course, it's Sheridan Lutheran Church, the parking lot that wraps around it. And we're down here at the very south end of it here. Excuse me. So the site plan shown, which is sort of faint, north to the top. So this shows the the area, the proposed lease area of the facility. The shelter that's shown here, approximately 450 square feet in area, give or take. An elevation was provided, sort of after the fact of this one. It depicts approximately what the facility is going to look like. I did try to follow up, didn't provide that. And so this is for the purpose of ALO Communications, who's in the process of building out a fiber optic network throughout the city of Lincoln. It's in the beginning phases, but it's going to require at least four of these buildings in Lincoln, perhaps more, but we know that we have four under review right now, this being the first I've done. And so we do have a couple conditions, recommended conditions of approval relative to landscaping. A landscaping plan wasn't really shown. We thought that it would be appropriate to have some plantings around this building just to break up, and otherwise it's just an open grass field at the end of the parking lot. And some design criteria that were provided by the applicant, we thought that it'd be worthwhile that those be included. But subject to those recommended conditions of approval, we find it to be an appropriate land use here at this location and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brian, are there any restrictions on noise or anything?
No, there's the well, there are noise, there are, there is a noise ordinance of the city of Lincoln. This does have an exterior generator, but the noise limits that are noted there are below the limits for this location. And so we didn't have anything additional placed on that relative noise limits. Actually, I'm glad you asked that question. I did want to make one minor change to the conditions of approval, and it relates actually to that issue. One of our conditions of approval, which is Item 1.1F, we asked that the testing, the operational testing of that generator, which occurs on approximately a weekly basis, we're told, that that operate that that be done essentially during daylight, you know, business hours. I listed 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and what I meant to say was 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That would match, that would match the hours of the noise limits from Lincoln Municipal Code. I guess I wanted to mention one other thing. The reason we pulled it off consent today, there wasn't opposition per se. We did get a letter, though, from an adjacent neighbor, Frank Orr, that lives at 7,004 Colwell's Court, and essentially raised three, three issues, three questions, which I guess I will address briefly. He noted that he thought we had the zoning incorrect when we talked about the zoning across the street. What I'd note is, in the bigger picture, it doesn't show up here as well, but we have R1 zoning out in this area beyond the limit. But where he lives, this area right here, is actually zoned R3. They have it listed incorrectly, I think, in the Register of Deeds. And he asked about security and monitoring, and I, I think the applicant can probably speak to that. They do talk about surveillance cameras on site. We didn't feel like additional security measures would be warranted, i.e. fencing the building, something to that effect, so there are no additional conditions relative to that. And as I said, we've talked about the the noise limits of the generator, and that's included as a condition of approval. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Brian?
Is that being corrected at the Register of Deeds office?
Yes, I told him that I would let them know and point that error out and see if we can get that corrected.
Anything else? Thanks, Brian. Applicant?
Good afternoon, Mark Palmer with Olson Associates. With me today is Todd Havlat from our Automation and Technology Group. Todd's working intensively with the ALO Communications folks on this project of the the Fiber to the Home Project for Lincoln. Southeast Lincoln is the first quadrant that's receiving the, receiving fiber installation first, and that's where this facility is, is the first to be constructed. Something we've been working with, and Todd can elaborate a little bit on the design of these, these are a modular bunker, basically, a building that comes as a concrete structure that is fully secure, fully weatherproof. We are getting a raw structure that is then getting amended to make it look and, and look more like it can fit in with the neighborhood. Brick siding will be installed. The paint colors will match the neighboring properties. The roof style will not be flat, it will be a pitched roof. And so we've, we've made the efforts to, to try and relate these buildings to the neighborhoods that they're coming into, and the Sheridan Church also for this location. A couple of things on this site was just, there will be landscaping. We're coordinating that with the church, and we're coordinating a number of items with the church also to get their approval and for, for finalizing the lease on this building. And I'll let Todd maybe explain a little bit more about what the building does and...
So the building will be an unmanned facility. It's just going to house their electronic equipment that'll feed the, the southeast quadrant. It's also going to feed into the northeast quadrant a little bit. That'll be in the first year plan. As far as the security goes on the building, it'll have two cameras on the building. That will actually, the only purpose of that will be monitoring the building entrance and the exterior of the building. It doesn't go outside that facility. They, it will be, have alarm systems, so if someone did break into the building, would be the only time that it would have emergency personnel would be called to that facility. Other than that, the, it'll be just general maintenance. They'll have maybe one or two vehicles that'll go there once a month or something to do. Routine maintenance. Generator, we are planning on that being running Monday through Friday sometime, middle of the day. We'll work that out with, if anyone has any complaints, that can be adjusted. It'll run once a week for probably, I think, 30 minutes. And then the only other time it'll come on is if we lose power to the facility.
Can you tell me the, the video cameras, are those going to be recorded? Are they, is someone watching them?
They'll, they won't be watched. They'll be, they'll be recording with, if someone goes into the side, it'll send an alarm, letting the, letting the ALO know that someone is trying to get in the facility or around the facility, and then they can turn the camera on. And, and at that time will record off of motion.
So if someone were to come and just do, and I hope this doesn't happen, but like spray paint or tag the building, the video cameras might not necessarily pick that up as far as like recording it?
It should. I can check that for sure with ALO. They can, they could probably set that up to where it would record if somebody would be tagging or if spray painting. Just on a side note, I'm also a member of Sheridan Lutheran Church, and I know right now we are in the process at, at the church to do security cameras on the full exterior of the building and interior of Sheridan Lutheran Church. So at that time between what ALO would put in, in the church, we could monitor the entire parking lot and their facility. And if, if it would, if it seemed feasible to add an additional camera on ALO building, I don't think they'd be opposed to that, to monitor in front or a little bit more of the surroundings.
And I noted the, the letter that we got, he was asking about a fence. How would you guys feel about putting a fence around this building?
I'd have to take that up with ALO. I mean, ALO would not be opposed to that. We were not wanting to put a fence up just because it would stand out more, and, you know, we're trying to blend in and not be that thing sticking out that everybody's going, what is it? So, you know, we tried to make it look like a garage or a house or, you know, something that should be there. So, but the original design was to put fencing around, so ALO would not be opposed to that, but the church might be.
Sure. Is, is losing that hour fairly inconsequential to you?
No, the, we agreed to Brian's amendment to changing from 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM. That's fine. We, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, that can be set up to run. It runs automatically. It's just to, to exercise the generator to make sure it functions every week. And that timeframe doesn't really matter, as long as everybody's happy with when it runs.
Any other questions? Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of this item? Do we have any other questions for staff? If not, you folks have anything else to talk? I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval. Cornelius?
As amended.
As amended.
Second, Beecham.
Thank you. Discussion?
I am, I think we can't build our gigabit fiber fast enough, and so the more of these that we, if we have to build more, let's build more. Let's keep them in line with the neighborhoods that they're in, and I, I am very excited about the whole thing.
Thanks, Michael.
I just want to thank the applicant for working with the church and matching the materials and even going down to the details of the pitch of the roof. I mean, I think that's fantastic, and, and that's really awesome. I'm not really too concerned about the fence as I see the, kind of the mock-up of what it's going to look like. I think it's gonna, you know, it'll just look like a shed or something out there that the church uses, so I think it'll be just fine.
Anyone else? I'm going to support the item. I think it's a good move. It's exciting for ALO to be here, and we'll move forward with this. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried as amended, nine to zero. Okay, the next item under public hearing is Item 3.2 Annexation Number 16005 to Annex Approximately 22.36 Acres, more or less, on property generally located at West Silverado Court and Highway 34. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. This is a, really three applications, the annexation, change of zone, and then preliminary plat. So this exhibit is showing the annexation and change of zone area. The annexation is, is essentially here. It's 22 acres. A portion of this area was already zoned R3, but it was outside the city. So there's an additional, about 1.9 acres that will be changed from AG to R3. Part of this, too, is the preliminary plat. It's hard to see details really on this, but, but the plat is 157 acres, 571 lots. The shaded area, these lots have already been, several lots down here have already been final platted, 88 lots have been final platted. On the future land use map, this area is shown as urban density residential. There was already a preliminary plat for this area from 2005, so this is essentially just amending that preliminary plat, changing some of the block layouts and the lot layouts, somewhat minor changes. Do we, do we have any questions?
Yeah, on page seven of the staff report, there's a, a box around Yankee Hill Road. What?
Not the right, I think what happened is it's annexation 15005, and it should be 16005, so it's from an old one. That was my guess.
In the preliminary plat, or the annexation staff report?
Page seven of the staff report.
Which, the annexation staff report? Just so I'm, because there's, you know, the different ones.
The packet that goes to the commission.
That map is incorrect.
Okay.
All right.
Other questions? Thanks, Andrew. Applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, here today representing Strastika Lewis, LLC. They picked up this property coming out of foreclosure several years ago, and as Andrew mentioned, it was first preliminary platted in 2005, approved, and first phase of development was done. They picked it up and continued on with the existing phase, and then as we began to examine the property closer, we determined that the previous layout by the previous engineer, there were several blocks that didn't meet the current block length requirements, and we also modified the grading to cut the grading cost in about half. So pretty straightforward, just an amendment to that existing prelim plat, and then annexing some more land to do the next phase.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Boyle with Kawasaki Motors, and I, I am new to this. I'm not sure how it all works, but...
Could you give us your address, please?
5408 South Dove Lane.
Thank you.
And a little background before I start speaking, I just grabbed a picture off the wall of our plant. Here's our plant, and the area we're talking about is right, right here. You can see the, you can see the relative location and size difference of our plant. You can also see to the, to the south where the golf course is. And I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to be speaking about those a little bit, kind of give you some background. So before assuming my position as a plant manager at Kawasaki, I was a mechanical engineer and involved with many of the expansions we had in our plant and the permitting process to get those expansions approved. My, my big concern about, about locating residential housing in that area, although I know it's been approved, and we're talking about annexing here, I didn't, I didn't get this till two days ago, and I did not know that situation had occurred. Right now, I, I get feedback back from the public that when they're playing on the golf course, the Highlands Golf Course, they can smell when we're painting a product in our plant. So when the wind is blowing in the right direction, the humidity is in the right, right percentage, golfers can smell that. It's not a big concern because they're outside, it's just a, just a minor thing. My concern is that during the summer months, when the wind's blowing from the southwest, blows over our plant and towards that new residential site, that young homeowners that spent a large majority of their, this biggest purchase they've ever made, are going to go outside and play with their kids and smell paints all the fumes. Now, our, our plant has been approved for EPA and Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department as far as our missions go. We've done site testing at our fence line to make sure, and modeling to make sure that we're within all requirements to do that, but the human nose can pick up relatively minor percentages of, of, of parts per billions as far as smell goes in industrial solvents. So my concern is that we're going to put some people living out there, and they're going to, they're going to, they're going to smell these, and they're going to question what's happening, and we're going to have some problems going forward. So locating in residential areas near an induc-, heavy industrial site like ours is really we've got to think about what we're doing here. I realize that I'm too late, but I want to get our, our, our opposition on record. This is, I guess, one way of doing that. Any questions?
Is the paint area close to this? Is it?
Yeah, I'll show it. So, sorry. So this area is one, one paint facility, there's another paint facility here, so you look at this distance to the golf course and then this, this spot to the residential area, and you can see that it's not that far away. When we moved in 40 years ago, we did not, we never expected homes to be cropping up around our, around our facility. So we own, we own property from where the building's located now to the Highlands, and anywhere within that property, we may establish other industrial sites. So what do homeowner, what do homeowners, what are they going to do when, when something happens and their quality of living is affected by our, our operations? We're going to have a fight on our hands.
Other questions?
Just one, just so I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying, you're saying there is no hazardous, there, there's no danger here?
There's no danger.
There, it's, is a potential nuisance that might make people nervous?
Yes.
And, and that, so that's your concern?
That's our concern. And, and the, the rel-, the, the interaction between the, the community and, and our company that may be a result of that. And then maybe potential any, any restrictions that may be placed on our, our business because of that fallout.
What could those restrictions be?
I, I don't know at this time. Our, our laws are always changing, so I, I don't, I don't know. It could be perhaps that going forward, any new, any new construction that we do, we may have to take additional precautions to, to mitigate any potential for that to happen, which are very expensive.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Boyle?
Have you reached out to the owners of this development to talk about these issues? Have you reached out to the owners of this development to talk about these issues?
Because I just, I just found out about it.
Okay.
Just a couple of days ago, so we hadn't had that opportunity.
All right. I know Mr. Eckert's good to talk to, if you, he'd probably, he'll talk to you in the hallway afterwards, too.
So right now, I mean, there's already some homes?
Yes.
Built out across there. You haven't had complaints from any of those?
We've had, we've had nothing at this time. They're, they're a little further to the east. My concern is the encroachment to the west and getting closer. And like I said earlier, we get reports back from people on the golf course, which are quite a bit further away, so. In fact, my father-in-law tells me all the time, oh, you guys must be painting today while he's on the golf course.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have questions for staff?
One.
Andrew?
And I do have the, the correct map here. So this map does give a little context. Here's Kawasaki and here would be, this is the plat area, this is the annexation area that's outlined on this map. But as you can see on the, the lot layout on the plat, the immediate southwest area is, is a outlot for drainage, so there wouldn't be any homes there. But we would be, so you can imagine the plants down here, we're a few hundred feet away from the plant with, with this preliminary plat. And again, this was originally approved in 2005 in this same basic form, so.
Is there another drainage area, kind of to the east and up above the exist, what's that open area there?
Right here?
No, down, left.
Yeah, right here is a...
Okay, that whole thing is, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Andrew, I know that a couple of times ago, we had discussion about how close an industrial-zoned parcel could be next to residential. Can you ref, do you know those distance?
I believe it was 300, yeah, 300 feet.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that this would be over 300 feet from the Kawasaki land?
It appears so. We haven't, I haven't measured it. Health did review this and recommended approval, so I mean, that would be part of Health's review and it, it appears that it would be 300 feet approximately, so.
So this process is obviously already in motion and as, as long as Kawasaki is meeting all the safety requirements and Health Department, public safety, there, there have been no concerns raised. Is there, can you envision any scenario where new restrictions would be put on, on the plant?
No. My understanding is that to the east of the, the plant now, it is, it is I-2, as you can see, so they could expand that direction. I think actually, all other areas are either on the future land use map for industrial or zoned for industrial right now around the plant. So I, I can't imagine that this would cause any restrictions on Kawasaki's operations in the future.
Thanks.
Do we have any kind of note that we put in the file? I'm just thinking back to when we were looking at putting in the apartments, kind of right the Buryan Church, and their pastor came and said that, you know, they were getting lots of complaints about the traffic, but that the church actually preceded the development of the neighborhood. And so I was curious, do we have any sort of, is it just a matter of policy as we're looking at things? If Kawasaki down the road was trying to develop and they were getting complaints about, you know, we don't want them moving next to residential, I mean, would it come out probably that, you know, Kawasaki was here first, kind of, and raised these concerns?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a fact when we're looking at things, is that if the plant was here and then all this residential starts surrounding it or something, that's a different situation.
They wouldn't be up against it trying to have to, I mean, they would have a bit of a footing to say, hey, we've owned this land for a long time and...
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the ground to the east there, I-2, if they wanted to expand there and be within that zoning, they would get that by right, then? No questions?
Well, I mean, there, there is the, the buffer that would potentially come into play, the 300 feet. Yeah, it's zoned right now for industrial, this area. When you look at the future land use, for a long time, where this neighborhood's going has been planned for residential. These are, other areas have been planned for industrial, so.
David Carey with the planning department. I, I just want, I was just looking at the GIS and I measured the actual right-of-way width of Highway 34. It's actually about 300 feet just the right-of-way. So the separation that we usually work with is, is there, just with the right-of-way. So the other issues of, you know, there's some foul smelling, you know, air with prevailing winds, you know, those are things that are pretty typical with those types of mix of uses and generalized areas. But as far as what we look at, the 300 feet is met by that right-of-way, just to be clear on that.
Michael, you have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking also at the GIS map and I just want to make sure I understand that the only area that we're talking about changing the zone of is that little bump out into the ag, right?
Yes, it's the...
And the rest is already zoned R3 residential.
Yes, this, this whole area is already R3, it's just outside the city limits. So that area is just being annexed, but it is already R3.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? Thanks, Andrew. Mike, any rebuttal?
So I appreciate the clarity Andrew and David brought. And so, yes, I guess, you know, this was, like I said, I, I know that this area, the area to the north of it, and I think there's even a portion of the area, and I'd have to check with David and Steve on this, an area to the west, that is directly north of Kawasaki, that has been in, I believe, the last three comprehensive plan revisions as residential. This is a previously-approved prelim plat. We are simply making some changes to it. Even though the annexation only covers an extra 1.5 acres and the change of zone, larger than that, we have also, you know, what, what's being approved in the amendment is everything that's shown from Northwest 12th Street to the border of the property, on the west to Alvo Road.
Out of, okay.
From Alvo Road on the north to the highway on the south. So this entire area is going through the revision for the prelim, from a prelim plat perspective, even though the change of zone and annexation are for smaller pieces. So, and lastly, I would say that, as you mentioned, they have an EPA standard, they have a probably a local Lancaster County Health standard that they have to meet at their property line, similar to lighting and other things. And the Health Department had no comments on this application or recommended it for approval.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And entertain a motion.
Oh, do we have to do three or can we do them as one motion?
The other two items were approved under...
Oh, they were approved, okay. Move approval.
Second. Chair.
I appreciate the perspective of Kawasaki and wanting to avoid conflict in the future. However, the bulk of this application, the land covered by this application, as I mentioned during question and answer, is already R3 and could be built out as residential anyway. And this is referring to a community unit plan that was approved in 2005. Because of that and because of the fact that the only change of zone is actually much farther from Kawasaki than most of the application to, the change of zone from ag to R3, I intend to support this. We already approved that change of zone. This is only about annexation of already-zoned property.
Tracy, anybody else?
Sure. I, I appreciate Kawasaki coming forward because I, I think what you're trying to do is be a good neighbor and say, hey, you should know that this might happen. But I think generally, you know, people don't get to move into a nuisance. So you were there first, you've been there a long time, you're a great employer and a great asset for the city. So I think, you know, people on a couple of days may not like the smell, but I don't particularly like the smoke outside right now. I, you know, I, I think since this has been on the books this way for so long and people buying the house are going to know that they're next to a major highway and a major industrial plant, I, I appreciate you bringing the concern forward, but I think their project is going to turn out okay.
I, I agree with both of my fellow commissioners. I really do appreciate you coming forward today and, and kind of giving us a heads-up about this, but I also think that what Janelle's saying is true, that the plant is already there, so when these people are buying their homes, they're going to be cognizant that, that that might be a smelly issue or something. And I, I do have hesitations and maybe, maybe this is something that should be looked at. I mean, I know that we've had problems in the past with industrial being next to residential and I see other, you know, like on the south side of Highway 34 where there, there are budding there, we need to maybe think about that in the future.
Anyone else? I intend to support this. I really appreciate that Kawasaki's conscience of that and recognizes it and that makes them even more of a good public citi, or citizen of, of our community. It is on the public record now and you can cite the, the minutes to this meeting that says, "I told you so" if that ever comes about. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornell, yes?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lass?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hoof?
Yes.
Motion carried for approval, nine to zero. Okay, next, under public hearing and administrative action, item 4.1. Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on this application, which is miscellaneous number 16001, to review the proposed determination that the South University Place redevelopment area, as set forth in the South University Re, Place Redevelopment Area Blight and Standard Determination Study, be declared a blighted and substandard area as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area includes an estimated 37 acres, which consists of vacant and occupied commercial use, open par, or park and open space, single-family residential, vacant land, and public uses, generally bounded by Holdridge Street and Francis, Francis Street and 48th Street to 49th Street. Staff recommendation is a finding of substandard and blighted conditions. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
C9.
Members of the Planning Commission, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. This area was brought to us because there is a developer interested in doing work in the area, providing housing and mixed use of a portion of the city that is blighted. That's the outcome of the study that was done by the Hannah Kealan Planning Firm, a reading of state statutes, and then an examination of the parcels and the property in this area. This is the location of the 30-some acres that we're talking about, 48th Street, 49th Street, University Place Park, and the area that is the initial focus of redevelopment. If you've lived in Lincoln a long time, this is an area that is well-known. When I was in high school, we went to Tasty Inn. And my friend, the cheerleader of our high school, Pam Rash's father, ran the Tasty Inn and had done, and that was open for 65 years. It's fallen on hard times, it's been unoccupied for more than two years. And if the market had a ready use for this property, if there was no need for help to the marketplace, this probably would have been purchased and revitalized. But it has stayed here, growing more and more difficult. I'm not sure that you can see the condition of the building here. Next to it, where one of my friends once registered as, when they were getting married, they registered themselves at the QP store. Think they wanted a full tool belt as the outcome of their getting married. But this structure's also been unused for several years. And if you were to take a look at the condition of the building, it is problematical. These are the two most well-known portions of the area, but there are areas further in that contain a number of dilapidated buildings of one kind or another. These are not a few minor exceptions to the rule. Generally, this is an area that is rundown. This is the sidewalk, the area, this is some more of the buildings that you can see in the area. In fact, over 70% of the structures are deemed dilapidated or deteriorated in the study. The average age of the residential houses are 91 years, the commercial structure's 65 years. And what's happened over 60 or 70 or 80 years is the standards have risen. Now, you get a grandfather clause for those original conditions that you had, but it would be almost face, substandard being, you know, 60 or 70 years of age. The water mains in the sewer here are 60 years old or older. So that a number of the conditions that are cited in this study relate to the state statute. We think that there is a, a clear indication that this is blighted and substandard. It would allow us to use the tool of tax increment financing and it would allow us to start the redevelopment of the area with a development that we're currently pursuing with a developer from the Minneapolis area. You might have seen it in the paper, it appeared there, because they have taken their ideas to the Urban Design Committee and shared it with them. The Urban Design Committee was, in fact, unanimously in approval of the building materials, the design of the project, and its ability to harmonize with the surrounding neighborhood. But this is the first action of an official nature. If we're to cross the finish line on that redevelopment, we'd ask for a finding of blighted and substandard for this area.
Questions for David?
Yes, why is, can you tell me the rationale for including the parks and rec public portion of this in the blight and substandard area?
You know, in, in a blighted area, and when there are developments, we negotiate with the developer for the use of the tax increment financing resources. What we don't do is give them a check and say, great project, thank you very much, and here's the TIF. We exchange with that. And one of the things that we're likely to do is saying, look, you are a neighbor and there are some resources that you share with the neighborhood. It would be good for your housing project if there was adequate park that you could share with the neighborhood. It's good neighborliness. So by including that in it, we would be in a position, either in this or future developments, to say that a portion of the proceeds could be dedicated for improving the public facilities close at hand, very companionable to this area, and with which they share it with the neighborhood. So we would put that as a possibility in our back pocket. We don't, we don't have a plan on the project that's before us to necessarily do that, but we haven't agreed to what the distribution of, of resources would be. We have, for example, on some of the downtown developments, asked the developers to say, look, we want to be helpful, but part of the students in your student housing, quite likely would like to use the N Street Bike Way because it goes right down your path. Let's take some of the TIF money and spend a portion of it for the public right-of-way that is that N Street Bike Way, because it is good for you, you're going to have students and they do like to bicycle, but it's a public facility shared with others. We'd consider using that strategy here. For the use of the resource, it, you have to be in the project area. So the boundary is critical.
Is, is the public park part of the substandard?
It's order, but we...
I mean, is there, is there substandard property on the park?
I'm not going to make that claim, but it is not necessary to find every parcel in a projected area to have that. In the case of the city of York, which had a lawsuit about the use of TIF, what they had to say was that there is a, there's a, there is a rationale that needs to be present. So that when you mix substandard and blighted area with areas that perhaps you, you're not necessarily making that same claim about, the overall area has to have a rationale as to why those are related. And we would think that residential use next to a park that is not aimed necessarily at student housing but family housing, would have a rationale to be concerned about the right-of-way and the public facilities close at hand.
Maya?
Does the public park or portion that may or may not share the, the TIF funds have to be within the blighted area to benefit from those ones?
Yes. What you, you are bound by state law to spend TIF dollars inside the project area. The first thing that happens is you have to draw the, the area that's blighted and substandard. And then, for an individual project, you, you identify the boundaries of the project. We have, on occasion, altered boundaries by city council action. So I'm not saying... So I'm not saying that it's in stone, but the reason that we're going to the city council to alter boundaries is because the use of TIF is limited to being in, first, the TIF area, in this case, the blighted and substandard, and then in the project area that is described. If you were to take a look at the downtown projects, Ms. Harris, you'd see that it's not uncommon for us now to take the blighted, oh, I'm sorry, the project area itself and then use the streets on all four, all four sides of that project, and perhaps even extend them a block so that there are areas of public right-of-way implicated in the project area. And one of the reasons is there's oftentimes landscaping or sewers or burying electrical lines where we want to get not just on the space of the developers using for their property, but the public facilities that they're making use of, that they share with other people. So we've done that on more than one occasion.
So you, you couldn't, if you, if you took the specific area, declared it blighted, and then the project area extended a little bit outside of that area and included a public park or a street or something like that, you, you can, you cannot amend at that point? Am I understanding correctly?
You could. Oh, you can't, you can amend the project area boundaries, but you can't amend this question. This question says, "What area are we going to declare blighted and substandard?" Then inside that, you do a project. The boundaries we've altered are the project. I can think of one case, but only one case, in which we made a very slight adjustment in the boundaries of a TIF district. But we did it because the planner wrote us, instead of the full study, and a letter of affirmation that says, "This bounding area is also blighted and substandard, and the findings that we made two years ago are also present in this area." And we had to take that up to the city council. That's the only time that I can remember that we've altered with a modest change. What is not uncommon is for an area, for example, this is south of the University Place area. But the University Place area has an area that is blighted and substandard. The boundary doesn't include this area, which is why we're back today about this, but it's close. Every now and then, the conditions that we declare here in that boundary are also present here, but we don't. Why? The TIF studies are done and paid for by the developers. So there's usually a developer who pays the five to ten thousand dollars to do this research. And it's because they intend to come to the city and ask for help. So we would have those boundaries. And then it's not, it's not impossible to have them next to each other or close to each other. And this is one that's close to, but not identical to the work we did in the University Place.
Kathy, you had a question?
I did. Hey, Dave, so every few years when we're looking at budget, we often, one of the things that, there's a big argument about whether to cut would be parks and pools. Are we in any way hurting this area by including it in the blight study? I mean, the last thing I want is, you know, two years from now, someone saying, "Well, we need to close this park or we need to close this pool because it's blighted."
Yeah.
Because this is a really popular area. I think this is an area that, this is a really important park and pool for this area. So can you just address that for me?
Let me give you an example of what you can spend TIF money for and what you can't spend TIF money for. You can't spend TIF money on the maintenance of the area. And by the way, the parks money that we don't usually spend is that maintenance, which is why we have eighteen-inch grass in some places. What you can spend the money on, and we have spent the money on, and I'll give you an example, the Havelock Park. We had one generation of recreation playground stuff made of metal, and it had the kinds of dangers that were common with the kinds of things I grew up with and brought home, you know, knots on my head from falling off the monkey bars and smacking myself up because it was made of hard metal. Or other, older generations. We have, on two occasions that I can think of, updated the equipment. That's a one-time expense. It's not the mowing or the snow removal or the like. So to the extent that we're doing something, I think you're talking about a one-time expenditure that upgrades it for the neighborhood and is not the kind of thing for which a general fund meltdown later on will come to work. A second place, by the way, that now comes to mind is a park in the North Bottoms area, in which, when we did the military, the Location Creekside Village, which is down on Military Avenue, had an entire generation of recreation facilities that did not exist that was there. It wasn't part of the development per se. This was just outside, but it was within the boundaries. And it was part of the understanding with the developer. He was interested in having park facilities right next door to have an amenity for the people inside the development that we were using the TIF for. So we used some of the TIF for that.
One other quick question. This is not exactly related, but you address in here, or they mention in the staff report, the issue with the traffic and how the blocks and the plaits don't line up with the streets behind. Do you know, is there any plan to change that? Are they, is this still going to kind of be the one big block? So I can't really turn into a street that goes all the way down through the neighborhood because these businesses are sort of not lined up with that. I was just curious if you know, as they're looking at the redevelopment, if that's going to change or not?
I don't have an answer for that, although the building that's being built is relatively long. The developer might be here and be able to answer that question. The part of the puzzle that I can share with you is that this developer came very early into meeting with the neighborhood. And by the way, the neighborhood that surrounds this area had no difficulty in saying, "Would you please tear down some of these structures and please spend twenty to thirty million dollars putting in new residential areas and creating more customers and creating a pedestrian-friendly space and some resources on the first floor that would be attractive?" And they have appreciated the attempt of the developer to harmonize with that neighborhood. What we haven't heard is, I have yet to hear, "Ah, you've made a bad situation worse." The uniform message is, "This is a very good thing. And by the way, we'd love to have some more a little further north if we could."
Michael?
I have a question. It's about a hypothetical. I may have posed it before, but I find it provides clarity.
All right.
I'm imagining a building that was built at some point in the past to the standards of the time and was maintained well over the intervening decades. It could be substandard in spite of not being dilapidated simply because of the evolution of codes and standards.
That's true. Remember that, in fact, dilapidated and deteriorated is one factor, but is not the same factor as substandard.
Sure.
It could be very well maintained in a highly flammable building product that would go up in a heartbeat and doesn't have the safety conditions that are now present when you build. We honor the building, but we wouldn't do it a second time at this condition because of the risks involved. Thank you.
I did note that when, there is a study being done of the dead man's run flow capacity as a drainage creek area. Is that something that if there's a problem with it, the TIF funds can be used to improve?
If the project area included land that implicated those issues, TIF could be spent for public purposes. What it can't be spent for is couches, a Keith Jacobs Hayden painting over the fireplace. What it can be spent for is sidewalks, sewers, bearing electrical lines. It can be spent for energy efficiency above codes, that we get more energy efficiency. It can be spent for high-end building materials that are exterior because they then establish the aesthetic for the public to view as opposed to the resident to enjoy inside the building. So the expenditures have to be for a public purpose. But those public purposes would include the management of floodplain issues. I do not know of such a case here.
Any other questions? Tracy?
I have a couple. So I'm going to kind of piggyback on some stuff that Kathy was, was asking you about in the park. I, I can't believe it's been two years since Tasty is closed. So it's going to seem, I know this is going to come as shock when I ask this, but how old is that pool in the park? Do you know?
I don't.
I'm assuming that it's in okay condition. What I'm getting at is, can, if, if it needs work, can we use some of those TIF funds to replace like a filter system or something like that or?
It depends on if the area that's there would be in the project, the project area. It is inside this area. Now, we have to do an agreement with the developer. If we put that space in, and it would be a public expenditure, the legal limitations of possibility are there. Understand that this is a voluntary agreement by two parties. We can't impose it, but we can say, as we have on several occasions, "We'd really like to help you, and you know, we'd like some help with some things we care about." That's a conversation that developers understand, and they do it all the time. And we've done that.
Any other questions for David?
Yep, I'm not done. I got a couple. So because I know that we've got a project kind of already in mind for some of these blocks, are, and I know that you found the sewer and the water mains kind of substandard, are those going to be replaced when this is redeveloped?
We're talking about it, we do not have a set of sources and uses. Understand, the right to have that conversation depends on what you do today. We don't have the legal right to have those conversations, in a sense, because we're not authorized to do it. But we do it because we collapse that process. Developers usually want to move quickly enough that this becomes telescoped down. I can't tell you that we have the sources and uses in place. Most developers would say, "We can find inside our building or the sidewalk right in front of us every one of the dollars that would be generated by the TIF mechanism." So there is a, there's an accommodation of interests across differences. But developers wouldn't come to us if they said, "You know what? We need, we need, out of this hundred bucks, we need ten. You take the ninety." That wouldn't meet what the whole purpose of this is. And that is to help a project cross the finish line that would otherwise be difficult or strain their ability to do the project. And for which, perhaps, they wouldn't build this project. They'd build a one-floor, one-story project. Doesn't mean they're not going to do something. The law doesn't say they're not going to do something, but the law does say, "To do this, they have to tell us that our help is necessary to do this." And this is a four- and five-story structure and expensive. And so they're going to have a claim for a good deal of those. And then we, at the margin, find public uses that we also ask for. Landscaping, street furniture, pedestrian sidewalks emphasize the pedestrian experience. Those are all kinds of things we would push the developer for.
I noticed in the report that there was a recognized environmental condition on that Forty-Eighth and Holdridge on the, right on the corner. Is that underground gas tanks? Is that what they're referring to?
It was previously a gas station location. You can predict that there will be problems with it. And the developer's aware of that and taking it into account, but it adds to the cost of the, of the development.
I think that's called a lust. So they know they have to remediate?
They do.
The problems?
Yes. If you built at the edge of the city in a pristine agricultural setting, you wouldn't have these problems, which is why it's cheaper to build there than it is here. Here, we have to buy Tasty Inn so we can tear it down and put our property on a sixty-five-year-old sewer system and remediate a gas station that was there for years, which is why, if left to its own device, the market just wants to sprawl further and further out because of the ease with which that kind of construction is done. Getting people to build in the infill has market functions and difficulties not present otherwise. And you've named one of them.
One of the other things in there is it talks about the inadequate street layout and putting, or lack of effective pedestrian vehicular, vehicular safety devices. Can you tell me like what, what they're talking about there?
Stoplights and stop signs, I'm going to guess, but in fact, I didn't drill down to that level.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay, anyone else?
No, 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 don't get, no, let's have, more.
Just to wrap up with the project areas. So if the park, park portion is within the blight area, but somehow in the negotiations, the park's left out of the project area. If the blight designation causes any problems down the road, can it be, can the designation of blight be removed?
In fact, state law is silent on that, but I think our law department would say this. If the city council has the authority to grant that it's blighted and substandard, then as a matter of logic, they would have the ability to not, to undo that decision as well. In the first case, to find that, they have to be able to support it with evidence. Now, not all cities do what we do, which is to have a study like this, and they just live on the fact that the city council makes the declaration. And if they're ever sued, then they'd have to go back and say, "Here's why the statute was met." There isn't an obligation to do this level of study. However, I'm going to opine well beyond my right to do so that if, if you grant the city council that authority, I think by logic, you've granted me authority to undo it, which means that we could undo a TIF designation if we wanted to. I'm not sure it would say necessarily that we now believe the land is not blighted and substandard. It would simply say, "We do not intend to use the tools granted by that designation in this area, so we revoke the designation."
Anything else?
I think you're done, Dave. Thanks.
You're the applicant, right?
Right.
So anyone wishing to testify in support? Tom?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Tom Houston, two-three-three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred here in Lincoln on behalf of Forty-Eighth Street Development LLC, which is a new company comprised of Schaefer Richardson Development of Minneapolis and also Greenleaf Properties of Lincoln. With, with me today are Don Lynn Scott and John Lynn Scott of Greenleaf Properties, if you have any questions of them. Over the last eight or so years, we've had a lot of urban renewal, many redevelopment projects going on in the core area of downtown Lincoln, and we've been very successful in that. It's good to see interest of redevelopment in other areas of town, too. I mean, North Forty-Eighth Street's a very important corridor with University Place. And so the, the ability to use the same urban renewal tool in other areas of town that need attention is a vital part of it. And it's important to see the focus on this North Forty-Eighth Street area. The blight study in front, in front of you today is really the first step in the process. And, and originally, the, obviously, University Place itself, there's a blight study in place there. One of the options would have been to extend that blighted area. But really, this area kind of stood on its own and really, and that, that blight study was twenty-plus years old. So we really felt like we needed to start from scratch and start with a new blight analysis. And the blight study, as indicated by Director Landis, prepared by Hannah Kealan and Associates, indicates that of the requirements for the criteria to find that substandard conditions are met, four of four of those criteria were met. And for the conditions for finding that blight exists, seven of the twelve criteria are met. So the blight study concludes this area is blighted and substandard, and we agree with the staff report reaching that same conclusion. The next steps in our process, if I get back to my office and sign a submittal letter, by four o'clock today, we will have a submittal going to the Planning Department that deals with a change of zone application, an alley vacation, and a planned unit development on, on top of the change, change of zone. The existing zoning is a combination of about three different zones right now. We're going to try to consolidate to allow a mixed-use urban development project. And hopefully, we'll be back in front of you in, in May, mid-May approximately, with the change of zone and the, the redevelopment plan itself. One of the first steps that my client undertook was back in early March, held a neighborhood meeting, particularly wanting to address the neighbors on the east side of the project, on, on the east side of Forty-Ninth Street, because they are directly affected. And one of the good things about this project, we're not there yet, but one of the good things, we're going to improve access and improve circulation within the neighborhood. I really think that we will because of compliance with access management policy and removal of some unneeded driveways, et cetera. So I think that there's a lot of good benefits that'll be accruing from this project. But in addition to the neighbors, immediately to the east, we also had neighborhood meetings with University Place Community Organization to the north, and then the East Campus Homeowners Association, ECHO. And we're all very supportive of the project. So if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. But I think the blight study in front of you, I think, certainly meets the statutory criteria. And this is step one of multiple steps that we'll be back in front of you for.
Questions for Tom?
Yeah, I want to just kind of go back-
Yeah, I wanna just kinda go back to, I mean, I know this is kinda putting the cart before the horse, but remind me, I know that building is long, does it span more than one block, or does it?
It, it, this, this site is unusually configured, how about that? It, it's, it has a, a length that is probably beyond a standard block size. There was an L-shaped alley, actually, there was a T-shaped alley in it at one time, the west portion of which had previously been vacated. So, we're left with an L-shaped alley, uh, that ultimately, the overhead lines will be buried as a part of this project, but we're gonna leave the sanitary sewer in place because it's expensive to, to move that line, so, but we're still gonna be vacating the, seeking to vacate the alley so that we can configure it as a part of the parking that's gonna be required. So, we're trying to address some of the infrastructure issues primarily, in addition to other, you did mention the environmental remediation, I actually, I asked the planning consultant to include that because it does indicate further evidence of blight, blighted conditions on the property.
So, I think the alley you're talking about though runs north-south?
There, there's one that ran east-west also.
Okay, so are you gonna continue, like, is Martin Street gonna come through to Forty-Eighth, or Aylesworth's gonna come through to Forty-Eighth?
No.
No. Do they now?
Well, Aylesworth, Aylesworth does, yes. Aylesworth at Forty-Eighth, yes.
And that will remain?
Yes.
Open? Okay.
Anyone else? Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the planning commission, I am Don Lynn Scott with Greenleaf Properties, three-hundred North Forty-fourth, Lincoln, Nebraska. Uh, we have been working on this, uh, project with Schaefer-Richardson for the last six months. We have had, uh, contact with Schaefer-Richardson for many years and feel that they bring, uh, the development expertise to really upgrade this area and help this whole area be, uh, upgraded facility, both retail and, uh, market apartments. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions, you'll see a lot of the plans, et cetera, as we bring those forward to you in the very near future.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn Scott? Guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of this item? Okay, do we have questions for staff?
I think we've got them all out.
Dave, anything else you'd like to?
I wanna take a nap.
We all could do that. Uh, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second, Harris.
Lust and Harris, discussion?
I, I have no problem declaring, um, the blocks between Francis and Holdridge, Forty-Ninth and I think it's Fiftieth, um, blighted, I think that that's pretty well-known. I was questioning some of the, the part, including the pla- parkland, like, like Commissioner Lust was. Um, I understand Mr. Landis's, um, reasoning for including it in there, so I think I'm gonna support, um, including the whole thing as a blighted area.
Thank you, anyone else?
Um, yeah, I would, I would echo that, and, uh, obviously, this, our discussion are cut up in the park portion because, um, this is a, a great infill project and much needed, and I think anytime you talk about, um, declaring blight on a public portion because of the image it could potentially, um, project if, when it stands alone in some statistics somewhere and somebody's looking at areas of parks that are blighted or something like that, is worth talking about, but I think it's right to be pragmatic about this, and if it can lead to some, some much-needed improvements, then, uh, all the better.
Anyone else?
I'm gonna support this item, and, uh, I don't think I've ever been more confident in the fact that this is blighted and substandard, so. Jerry, please call the vote.
Sure. Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay, under pending list, um, we've been carrying special permit number one-five-zero-six-four, which is to allow Avalon Event Paradise to be used for special events on property generally located at one-two-seven-eight-eight West Roca Road. It's been on the, uh, the pending list since January sixth, um, via motion from the, uh, planning commission. A written request has been submitted on behalf of Viann Martin, the applicant, of this special permit to remove the application from pending and be placed on the May eleventh, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission agenda. Um, just a little bit of background, on November eighteenth of two thousand fifteen, the planning commission approved a motion to place this application on pending for two weeks to allow staff additional time to research, um, what would be allowable if the special permit were either approved or denied. As part of that motion, the public testimony on this application was closed and limited to staff findings followed by app, the ability for the applicant rebuttal. Then on, or following the November eighteenth hearing, uh, three consecutive requests for two-week deferrals were requested by the applicant, with the last one being on January sixth of two thousand sixteen, at which time, the planning commission passed a motion to place this application on indefinite pending until such time that the applicant was prepared to move forward. So just giving you a little bit of background on that.
I would move to reconsider the motion to place it on indefinite pending.
Second, Core.
Any discussion? Jerry, do you understand what?
Okay, we don't, and I know that I did send an email saying?
We don't need two separate motions?
Well, we don't need to reconsider because?
Okay.
Of the language that was included?
Uh-huh.
Um, in the original motion?
Okay.
To bring it forth, um, at the applicant's request when they were ready to, then basically, we just, we really just need the motion to remove it from.
Okay, well, I'll remove my original, or withdraw my original motion and move that we put it on the schedule for the upcoming meeting.
But we just, we're just removing it from the pending?
Just remove it from pending.
Fine.
Do we need to put in, 'cause they wanted it on May eleventh, which is not our next meeting.
That's right. They're requesting for May eleventh.
I mean, I'm fine with that. So do we need to amend his motion, or?
I think it's understood.
He just did it.
And then the other thing that, do we wanna keep this closed to new testimony? Just let the applicant in the, or do we want?
I think it's like we're starting a whole new?
Yeah, and I, I really think we need a whole new?
Enough time has passed.
Staff report, I was frankly, a little hesitant even to remove this from pending without a new application because I think we had so much moving target and so much needed analysis of what the actual legal standards were, that, you know, we ended up with five memos and, um, so I really wanna see a brand-new staff report before we consider it.
So it's like we're starting all over again, and need to make sure that the applicant, as well as the folks that were against it, all hear that, so. Any other questions or clarification?
Would that, would that condition about new staff report have an effect on when Mark Kenziger would wanna, it wouldn't? Okay.
Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Tracy did.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify, when you say brand-new, you want a full public hearing and to allow all the neighbors to come back and testify?
Yes. Yes, because, I mean, a- at this point, I'm not sure that after the two weeks, we still had full clarity on what could be allowed by the, um, expanded home occupation.
But I thought that's what these memos clarified.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just wanna make clear, because people who had previously testified, we wanna be able to sure we notify them, do they now have the ability to come back and testify again or not?
I, I think so, because?
So I just wanted to clarify that.
I, I think because of the clarity.
Well, I, that wasn't the intent of my original motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I wanna, well?
Can we have discussion on it since there's a motion?
Sure. We have, we have a motion, it's like, oh, I'm sorry.
Here, here's my thoughts on it, I, I think, you know, from the original hearing to the second hearing we had, the ability to do some of the things on the property, even under an expanded home permit, based on who was an independent contractor versus employed on the property, changed significantly, so I think we may be looking at a very different type of what use can occur on the property than was originally presented to the neighbors that came to testify in opposition. And it would seem to me that, you know, those changes might change some of the neighbors' positions. I, I doubt it, I mean, I'm, I'm a pragmatist, pragmatist about it, but, um, you know, I think they should have the opportunity to be heard on whatever it is that the project now looks like.
And I think enough times passed that I would, should soon be refreshed, if nothing had changed, I'd rather be refreshed on what people have to say at this point in time.
I think there was some question on ownership of the property and who's gonna be operating the business, and I, I suspect maybe something's changed there too, I'd like to hear that and have people have the opportunity to respond.
Other thoughts?
So if my motion is to return to this item under the conditions that it was being considered in the past, then the vote, if you think there should be, it, public hearing should be reopened, then the vote for this motion should be no.
Unless you amend your motion, do you still?
I'm not going to.
Wanna close?
Okay.
So it's still open for new information, right? So, any new?
Yes.
You're allowed to testify with anything new, or, or?
But the, but the motion at hand is only new information, no testimony from the past.
Would that include a new position? Would new information?
So if you change your mind?
If you, if you wanna come forward and say, I'm now comfortable with it?
Well, let, let me say that I am not necessarily in favor of my motion anymore, and I've heard from, I think Jean told me once, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, that she preferred not to have amended motions, she preferred just to have up or down votes and then an, another motion, and I'm, that's why I'm sort of sticking on that.
Let's call, let's call the vote.
Okay, this is to remove, uh, special permit one-five-zero-six-four from pending. Is that correct?
Well, there's all this other stuff floating around to?
With no new, or with no?
With?
Well, I?
With just new information.
With just new information.
Well, that's because that's what was put on pending.
Right, right. Correct.
Jerry?
With just basically staff information and applicant rebuttal?
Correct.
That's what this is?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay, I gotta make sure that I'm understanding now, so this is, this motion that we're voting on right now is to take it off pending and only for new information?
Correct.
From staff with applicant rebuttal?
Okay.
And we'd place it on the May eleventh?
So if, if a neighbor had new information to share, they could come up and test, testify?
No.
No.
Okay.
Jerry, let's call the vote.
Okay. Beecham?
No.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Core?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
No.
Sunderman?
No.
Weber?
No.
Shear?
Yes.
And Hove?
No.
Hove?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, six to three.
Okay. At this time, anyone wishing to speak online or not on the agenda may do so. We're adjourned.